Welcome to our workshop. I'm looking at our, we had something earlier that was canceled. So this is our administrative and formal workshop and we're starting at 3:30. I'm Trinay Sriggs, School Board Chair, and the administrative informal and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, is hereby convened at 3:30 PM on this 12th day of September 2023. Members of the public will be able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.vbschools.com/meetings/live, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47 and on Zoom. And thank you to those that have joined us in person and online. Madam Clark, will you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex Einstein Lab are Chair Riggs, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Owens.
Okay, thank you. And Vice Chair Carolyn Weems is in an appointment that has lasted longer than she expected, but she will be here. And she'll be a little late. And Stacy Martin is coming right now. She just got here from Richmond, right?
Very good.
Pretty good. You got here sooner than you thought. Okay, so we're going to start with the school board administrative matters and reports. Do any school board members have anything to report? Ms. Melnick?
So many times I say leadership matters, and it does. And it matters from the very top and it matters all the way down. And I just want to commend our school division for our SOL scores. Our teachers are so incredible and what they're asked to do is huge. Every day it's huge. We hear from our teachers. We know it's hard. We love our teachers. We appreciate our teachers and we thank our teachers because what they do for us is just really, it's just really remarkable. They make this board look like rock stars and I'm grateful for that. Many of us spent time in the classroom and we know how hard it is. But to do as well as we did really deserves a standing ovation and I'm happy to lead that. I know we never rest on our laurels in Virginia Beach and we know that there's work to do, but for all of our leaders here and our leaders in our classrooms, kudos.
Thank you, Ms. Melnick. That was great. I agree. Ditto. You all worked so hard. Late into the night, too. I know that. Is there anyone else? Okay, so I have a couple of things I want to remind everybody about the phone and data allowance. If you decide with the phone allowance, if somebody has not partaken of that and you decide, I think I'll do that now, just respond to or let Regina know, email her. And after the vote tonight with the data, the same thing, if you decide you want to follow with that. Okay? We had our first superintendent search meeting yesterday. It was our planning meeting. I think it went very well. Everybody had great questions and obviously I think we chose the correct company because they were right on the ball. They had everything together. And as I'm speaking, I see that Brad Drager has sent in the minutes from the planning meeting from yesterday. And so we have got our, he sent the minutes along with a timeline because we made dates and decided on that. And we'll be sharing those at our next school board meeting. Okay? So it went very well. We're excited. All right, so let's come to be our annual recruitment staffing and retention update. Welcome, Anne Glenn Zeljusznak.
Say it for her. Say it for her.
Say it for her.
Um, Zelsnak.
Zelsnak. Okay, thank you. And our coordinator, recruitment and retention for the Department of Human Resources.
And I'll just briefly open up. Anne does a tremendous job and I'm looking forward to having her present the information. So, good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. I am Cheryl Woodhouse, Chief Human Resources Officer. This afternoon, Ms. Anne Glenn Zelsnak, Coordinator of Recruitment and Retention with the Department of Human Resources, will provide the annual update on recruitment, staffing, and retention, as well as share what the HR department is doing to recruit staff. Please know at the conclusion of the presentation, both Anne and I will address any questions you may have. And now I turn over the presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Woodhouse. The agenda for today's presentation includes the market conditions and challenges related to the supply and demand for teachers and staff at the national, state, and local levels. Staffing results as of August 25th, opening of school data, and an overview of some of the division's recruitment strategies. In alignment in alignment with the division's strategic plan, compass of 2025, specifically Goal Four, an exemplary diversified workforce, the Department of Human Resources supports intentional, focused, and innovative recruitment and retention efforts that support our core values. Market conditions continue to impact teacher shortages at the national, state, and local levels. These shortages are a direct consequence of the intricate relationship between supply and demand for teachers. Notably, fewer individuals are choosing education as a career due to the negative perceptions of the teaching profession and the challenges teachers face in earning a competitive and sustainable wage when compared to other professions requiring a college education. Another factor placing stress on our recruitment efforts is the high cost of housing, especially in Virginia Beach. As a division, we can assist with overcoming this challenge facing negative perceptions by continuing to focus on, speak about, and highlight the many positive aspects of teaching. We, as a division, can also stay committed to offering a competitive salary that will assist our efforts to recruit and retain staff. In this graphic, the blue line represents a supply of available teachers and the black line represents the demand for teachers. As you can see, the demand for teachers greatly outnumbers the estimated supply. The gap has widened since 2010, worsened during the pandemic, and continues to increase. The teacher shortage is a national concern and is at the forefront of staffing. In Virginia, the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission's 2022 Report on the Teacher Workforce reflects the number of first-time teacher license holders entering the profession. As you can see, there was a 15% decline in the first-time license holders during the 2022 school year. The number decreased from 8,400 to 7,208. This data is in alignment with the previous slide published by the U.S. Department of Education. The situation becomes even more alarming when we consider the top seven critical shortage areas identified by the Virginia Department of Education for the 2023 school year, as shown on this slide. In Virginia Beach, our greatest shortage area is special education. Although world language was removed from the state's list this year, it remains a critical shortage area in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Adding to the challenge of hiring qualified applicants is the housing market. The lack of available housing, elevated sales prices, and competition among buyers, increased rental property rates, and supply chain labor shortages have caused applicants not to consider Virginia Beach for employment. Understanding the challenges allows us to plan for continuous success. It starts with the Department of Human Resources motto, which is simply, recruitment is everybody's, everyone's responsibility. The next several slides will cover the staffing data as of Friday, August 25th, prior to the opening of school on Monday, August 28th. As of August 25th, 2023, we hired 476 new teachers, which included 13 future teacher award winners comprised of students who completed the Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow program offered in all of our high schools, 52 early commitment acceptances, and 152 letters of intent recipients. I'd like to point out that of the 476 new teachers, 50 former employees were rehired and 40 were promoted from within the division, including a bus driver and one of our own HR associates. As a review of our school data reveal that 511 teachers retired or resigned during the 2022-2023 school year, yet our retention rate increased to 90.07%. This would not be possible without the support of the school board and our superintendent in implementing the compensation package for our employees. As of August 25th, there were a total of 36 full-time instructional vacancies across elementary, middle, and high schools. This is very similar to last year when we opened with 35 instructional vacancies, but much better than the 138 vacancies from two years ago in 2021. We continue to review new instructional applications and work with hiring managers to process recommendations. Again, this could not have happened without meaningful collaboration between school administrators, division managers, and the Department of Human Resources. As of August 25th, there were a total of 35 full-time non-instructional vacancies across elementary, middle, and high schools. This is 16 fewer vacancies in comparison to last year's when we opened with 51 non-instructional vacancies. Currently, our largest vacancies continue to be for both custodial and food services staff. Custodial vacancies increased by 33 from last year, having opened with 74 vacancies. Food service vacancies decreased by 23, down from 96 vacancies last year. HR will continue to advertise and recruit new employees to fill full-time vacancies. I am pleased to report that we have enough bus drivers to cover all bus routes. This is a significant difference from last year when we started the school year with 63 vacancies. Currently, we have 40 bus assistant vacancies. Routes were combined where possible and bus drivers in training were utilized to train, trained and trained to be bus assistants to temporarily fill the vacancies. Two years ago, as a recruitment and retention initiative, the school board approved waiving student tuition for VBCPS staff who did not reside in the city of Virginia Beach. As shown in the chart, this initiative has been a positive, allowing our employees to enroll their children in our schools. The plan is to continue with the tuition-free program as a recruitment and retention initiative. Having an innovative recruitment plan is key to our success. We promote and advertise employment opportunities using various methods, including our division's distribution van. The next few slides will highlight some of our strategies. In addition to hiring fairs, we have an extensive print and media campaigns that run throughout the year. We have continued to utilize QR codes on promotional materials that direct candidates to the online application. Interviews through various media outlets allow VBCPS staff to advertise vacancies and upcoming events locally. YouTube advertisements, radio campaigns, and other paid advertisements provide information about VBCPS to candidates beyond our local area. The Virginia Employment Commission's Virginia Workforce Connection provides another resource for VBCPS to connect with potential candidates for employment. The Department of Human Resources' virtual hiring events, citywide events, and participation in job fairs around the state are other opportunities to recruit staff. The Department of Human Resources continues to offer onsite support in addition to onsite application support at the Office of Custodial and Distribution Services and the Office of Food Service. Applicants can receive assistance with starting an application, ask questions about our division, and obtain information about our job postings and positions. Another recruitment resource has come from our student teachers and school counseling interns working in our buildings. We hired 72 of these students for the 2023-2024 school year. VBCPS was also able to recruit teachers from the Philippines to fill critical shortage areas. This was previously done in the 1990s and early 2000s. Lastly, VBCPS has an attractive benefits package for its employees that includes competitive pay, lower-cost health premiums, paid leave to include major holidays, and wellness leave for a second year. So how can you support Virginia Beach City Public Schools in recruiting staff? Elevate education. Continue to share the good news about teachers, staff, students, families, and school communities. Follow, share, like, and repost information from the division and the HR social media sites. Speak with family and friends and peers about employment opportunities in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Encourage all to join the field of education. And yes, we are hiring. All interested candidates should visit the division's website at www.vbschools.com and click on the employment tab in the upper right-hand corner. This concludes the annual recruitment staffing and retention presentation. Mrs. Woodhouse and I stand ready to answer questions, any questions that you may have. Thank you. Ms. Franklin?
Thank you for this presentation. You always do a great job. And I just wanted to put a request out there. I actually was at the event with some of those Filipino teachers and they're so grateful to be here and appreciate all of the, you know, welcome events that they've had and all the help they've had. But right now, some of them are still Ubering to work. So I'm going to just put a request out because I know this community is amazing and we have very generous people. And I'm going to just ask people that if you have a car that you wanted to donate or if you have some opportunities, I have a list of schools and teachers, and if you're willing to help out, that would be so helpful so that they can not only help get acclimated, but also stop using their money to go back and forth to work. So I'm just going to put the request out there. Thank you.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you. Lots of exciting, promising news. I had a question with our bus drivers. Very exciting that we have enough to cover all of our routes this school year. I was wondering if that means that we don't currently have any bus driver vacancies or if it means that we've combined routes enough that the ones that we have hired are able to cover everything until others are hired? Where does that leave us with the bus drivers?
And I know Mr. Freeman's in the room, but I will say that it's a combination of both. So every year, transportation bases the number of drivers needed on the routes. So you'll know during the pandemic, we put an all-call out and asked parents to assist with transportation and we have not had to do that. So once parents express their interest and need for transportation, then we evaluate those numbers. So we have currently filled enough spots without delays, except, you know, your typical, I call it first days, weeks of school delays to cover. But we also continue to recruit. So we have additional candidates in the pipeline for training and ready to come on board should we face other resignations and/or retirements.
Perfect. Thank you. And then my other question was in regards to the custodial vacancies. I'm just curious if we have some ideas, you know, what's driving that and any plans on the horizon to start working on it?
So we constantly, as a team, come back and evaluate where our vacancies are. So we did see again during the pandemic, our greatest retirements and separation for employment. We did have conversations around the starting wage, also for our custodial and food services staff. So currently, right now, we do have a substitute initiative that we work with that allows other non-instructional staff to fill in, to pick up extra hours on an evening shift. And then we are going to come back to the table and have some conversations around what we will need to do to fill these future vacancies.
Great, thank you. And I just wanted to kind of throw out there to my colleagues, one of the things that was mentioned yesterday is that we are expecting Amazon to come to the city and when they do, they are going to be a competitor for a lot of these positions, our bus drivers, our custodial staff, our cafeteria workers, and making sure that we are competitive at that point to the best that we can be because we are going to be in a fight for these employees. Thanks.
Ms. Franklin?
Thank you so much for this and thank you guys for all of your hard work on this. I've gotten a number of calls from folks that have applied for substitute positions and I didn't see that in the memo or the slideshow. Are we still short as a division on substitutes? Or instructional substitute?
So there's always a need for a substitute because the number of people out and the number of people, so let's go back. We have a full load of substitutes. It's a choice that they get to work. So we can't always say we have the numbers, but if they don't choose to work that day for whatever reason. So the site assigned substitutes have been key, which we have, all of our schools have site assigned substitutes, have been key to helping out and filling in those spots because that's what that position was designed to do. So as they go through the hiring process, what we have found over the years, and I used to oversee that office and now there's another colleague, but I did it for six years, it is still a recruitment piece at the school level, too, right? The more that you can coach and be encouraging and kind of tap into these unknown resources. I know for myself as an administrator, I had a lot of parents that I felt, you know, and I was specific because I felt like you need to be professional, you need to understand what you're walking into. So it's a little bit of recruitment and we just talked about that being everybody's responsibility. That's one option. But you still, we still need people to put in their absences early so that we know there's emergencies that do happen. But I can tell you for a fact that if you call an hour beforehand, and that does happen and we, again, there's emergencies, but remember, if you want to work, you're going to be looking what, the night before or early in the morning? And you're going to be selective of where you would like to go. I kind of, in my training, when I used to do it, I used to say it was like a buffet. You get to pick and choose where you like to go. So the more we continue to be encouraging and positive at our schools and welcoming, that's one element. But again, the choice to work at will does impact the ability for, you know, for substitute positions to be filled. We also try to remind people that it is great part-time work. So we're working with colleges now, Virginia Wesleyan in particular has, is trying to, you know, we're working with colleges and say, hey, listen, this is a great opportunity for college students because it's part-time work they can control when their schedule changes every week. So if you know young, you know, freshmen in college, you know, they're trying to get their feet wet in that space or out here, this is, it's another great way to have a part-time job, even at the nighttime, even if you're coming just new to the area. So we're always encouraging people, fill out the application. The number one problem we have with the application is people forget to apply to the substitute posting because they just think that they apply. So always apply to the posting and your name goes in that folder and then our team, the substitute office starts to screen the application and make sure they have all the necessary documents.
Okay, and so that would, that might be why some people have some challenges getting a response is because they have forgotten to click
You have to apply.
the button to apply.
Yes. And they can, and
Just always, always call our office anytime they have any questions, any concerns, and we're happy to walk them through the process.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And we do have the kiosk at, if you don't know that, we have a kiosk in the, our HR office that we help people with.
And I'll make sure that I advocate for people to look into that. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Melnick?
Okay, two questions. The special ed piece. So can you explain what we're doing with some provisional licenses and special education?
So we have the TRIET program, which goes, which is supported by the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children. That's one alternate route. Then, of course, staff members are eligible to take, there was a course that they have to have a bachelor's degree and they take a special education course that encompasses information about the law and categorical IDs. It's a specific course that is recognized by the VDOE. It's an acceptable course. It has to be recognized by the VDOE. It's a specific list of courses. A course. Seriously.
So you could have a bachelor's degree in X and take this one class.
And be eligible for a provisional license.
Okay.
The state will cite all of the things that you need to do.
Okay.
You have three years in which to get a full tenure renewable license.
Okay.
We have another program where we have a partnership with a university where teacher assistants could either be eligible to be in a, in a, in the community college or directly through that particular university. And so there's about nine students, nine teacher assistants from our division that are in that program. And then there's another partnership with another university where the students are
where the students are obtaining, four teachers, four teacher assistants are obtaining a master's degree in administrative, or master's degree in special education.
So you could have a degree in criminal justice. I said X, but it could be criminal justice. So then you have three years to satisfy that special ed requirement.
And utilize our tuition reimbursement as well.
Okay.
That one, just want to plug that plug in.
But do those three years in the classroom mean that you don't have to do the student teaching piece? That satisfies the student teaching piece or?
Correct. It's an alternate route to licensure.
Okay.
So, and that's what we have. The State Department has put out guidelines around alternate routes to licensure. So when we do the all-call and cast the net wide, we're looking for individuals who already have a degree, whether it be a bachelor's degree or master's degree, but have always had an interest in being in the field of education. We bring those individuals in and with a lot of support through the OPEC Office mentorship program. They are allowed to work towards getting what they need to fulfill that provisional license. And so their student teaching becomes on-the-job work experience. And we have that not just in special education, but in many other fields as well.
Okay, so it's beyond special ed. Okay.
Because it can be the bachelor's plus the praxis assessment.
Exactly.
Okay. And so my other question was food service. So we've lost food service workers. And in their exit interviews, are they just, you know, we do so much now with our scratch cooking and, you know, we have our cohorts, you know, of people working towards more. Are they leaving because there are other opportunities? Or is it saying any, do we have any data in the exit interviews?
So we have the quarterly report that we provide the board in terms of the exit survey data. When you look at the personnel report and the reason, the number one reason cited traditionally is actually retirement or separation for other reasons. Majority of our full food service staff is also part-time. So when you asked, are we looking at innovative ideas and ways to assist these two offices? We actually are. We're looking at the possibility of split contracts where they could be a food service employee for the four or four and a half hours of the day, potentially a custodian for the remainder of their day. So we are looking to be more innovative. But yet also, if you know, the food industry in itself allows a lot of opportunities as well. So yes, we do see sometimes our baker cooks and some of our other culinary staff pursue other opportunities that will allow them probably to bring home and earn a little higher pay as well. And so we do compete, you know. When we talk about our number one competitors, once upon a time, it was other school divisions. Now it's every employee entity out there hiring.
I remember that. For those of us that have been around a long time, you know, we begged, we hoped, we prayed to get, to break through to BBCPS. But I applaud your creativity and everything you're doing to get those numbers down to zero.
Ms. Anderson?
So the reciprocity that we have with other states, is that a problem? Or do we have a good reciprocity with, for example, Maryland, Florida, the states where, or even California, states where we think of military people come from? I mean, I was in that position. And I'll tell you, it was a burden at one point. And so what can we do to lighten that burden for reciprocity? I mean, should we be talking to legislators about possibly, you know, making exceptions, especially from military spouses who are transferred here, that type of thing? Could you enlighten us a little on that, please?
And I will say, Ms. Anderson, when I entered the division 27 years ago, I had the same challenge. Even a few years ago, we mentioned that. The State Department VDOE has done incredible work over the last couple of years in reducing and almost eliminating any barriers we were having in terms of hiring staff, whether it be from out of state or in case of our Filipino teachers, out of the country. So it is, has been amazing. And so I think, not think, I know. Everyone has recognized, this is a national crisis. This is not a Virginia Beach or the state of Virginia. This is a national crisis. And the last thing we want to do is put up roadblocks for employees who want to stay in the field of education. But looking back, just like myself, husband being military, graduating from Kansas State University. When I came here, I literally had to do so many different assessments and just, just a lot of things to be qualified to teach in the state of Virginia. They did issue me a provisional, but it came with a caveat of conditions that I had three years in which to fulfill. So the employee may still have some coursework they have to take, but they can come in, and as long as we can verify their current license, we can get them a provisional license.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for all of that wonderful work you guys are doing.
If I could put in one more plug. Knowing that we have the vacancies that we do in our custodial department and our food services department, as you visit schools, they are exceptionally clean. I only wish my house looked like some of these schools. I complimented several staff members. I said, you literally could eat off your floor. These buildings are amazing. And our food services staff continue to feed 65,000-plus children without a hitch. Because, let me tell you, you will get a phone call if a child is not fed. And so I just want to put a kudos out there to the work that is done by both of those offices because it's tremendous. You would never even know or guess that they had the vacancies and the numbers in which we showed on these slides this evening.
I agree. Every, every school I've been into has shined. They keep it very clean. Okay, so we are on our next See Your Voice Employees Input Process. Welcome, Edie Rogan, our Director of Office of the Office of Employment Relations.
Hello. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, school members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Edie Rogan, Director of Employee Relations. And I will be giving you an update on the current status of the enhanced employee input meetings. As you recall from our May 23rd School Board presentation, during the 2022-23 school year, there were five division-wide meetings held, and in total, 97 individuals participated in the meetings. In that meeting, the decision was made to continue with the employee input meetings for the fall of 2023, with the hope that we will see increased participation by moving the sessions to October. Last year, they were in November. With that in mind, we have scheduled three sessions for this October. Two sessions will be face-to-face, and one session will be virtual via Zoom. And those will all take place at 5:30 in the afternoon. So people will be off of work when, when they take place. Registration is currently open for all sessions, and all active employees are encouraged to participate. Employees are asked to register for the meetings using their school division email accounts. And only registered employees may attend a meeting. Employees will not be required to provide their names once they're admitted to the meetings. And to maintain confidentiality, the registration information will not be released or retained after the meeting. And this is the same thing that we did last year. Like last year's meetings, these sessions will focus on glows, which is what is working well, and grows areas for improvement with a solution focus. The participants will place themselves into small groups. And the number of groups and the size of each group will depend on the number of employees who register. Facilitators will be available in each group to assist participants in their discussions and to record their notes. We realize that not all employees feel comfortable speaking in groups, so feedback cards will be available for employees to submit additional ideas. And these were very popular last year when we did those. And almost half of the employees actually put in individual cards as well as participated in the group meetings. The cards will be collected at the end of the face-to-face sessions. We then take that data, as we did last year, and report it out to you. To communicate the meetings to employees, a principal's packet memo was released on August 10th, instructing principals, directors, and department heads to share this information with staff. And in order for the information to reach as many employees as possible, we asked work sites to display provided flyers in locations routinely accessed by their employees, such as lunchrooms and break rooms. The registration was, information was posted on VBS's internet webpage since mid-August, as well as on the division's events at a glance. And a division-wide email went out to all employees on September 7th to remind them to register for these meetings. And a follow-up reminder will also be sent to employees on October 5th if spaces remain unfilled.
And in the quickest school board workshop presentation in history, this concludes our presentation. We are here to answer any questions you may have of us.
Ms. Melnick?
We don't play in HR.
So I'm not going to lie, I'm disappointed. So we, a lot of us, we've been to one of these, and everybody was very honest in their thoughts and their comments. I mean, I understand it's at 5:30 after school day. You know, people have children. It might be inconvenient. But, oh, I did the math. You know, the number registered and the number of attendees, that fall off was disappointing also. But I don't, I don't know what else to do. Like, I don't know how else to offer opportunities. Maybe my colleagues have some ideas, but...
So Ms. Melnick, in HR, we didn't look at it as being disappointed in terms of the number of people who attended. We have so many opportunities for our employees to express their thoughts and share their concerns. They contact you directly. We have our teacher forum, our teacher assembly. I mean, we even have a superintendent student group. And believe me, they can find me on the website. They have no problems in contacting HR directly. So what we really thought of it is this. We have some employees who would prefer that opportunity to have a face-to-face or even a virtual meeting. But even the division surveys, we put surveys out to our staff. I really believe that it's because our employees feel heard. And they feel like, once they reach out to, whether it's any member who's sitting in this room or email the board directly, that their concerns are reviewed, investigated. And if changes can be made, they are made. So I like to look at it and give it a positive twist. But those who still would like to come and have some face-to-face time will do so. Because we tend to do the same thing. We're like, oh, we didn't have but 10 people sign up. But then I would say to myself, what happens if we had like 10,000 sign up? Then that says to me that our communication process is probably not working. And we need to reevaluate. So this, to me, says it's working. But this was just, I call it a nice caveat, the cherry on top of the sundae.
Okay, fair enough. As long as you're not seeing something different out of here that's not being handled or taken care of in another way. If this were that different.
No, we analyzed the data last year after those sessions and put them in categories as we had reported out to you in May. And they were very consistent with what we found from the survey that we do every other year. And it was very consistent with exit surveys and then the meetings that we have, Dr. Robertson has with the teacher forum and those types of venues. So it was very consistent with what we'd already seen.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Manning?
Well, and that was going to be my comment. You guys already said kind of what I was going to say. Great job. I mean, I think that when I interpret this information here, to me, it tells me that employees feel like they have opportunities to voice their viewpoints. And I know that before we started this process or around the time, Dr. Spence had provided us a list of the different groups and ways that employees can give their input. And so perhaps that they, they've just found a different way to do that. And that, maybe that's why we don't have higher numbers here. So I just wanted to say kudos. I mean, I know you guys are always saying, our door is open. We always want to hear from employees. So, so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Callen?
Well, in light of a comment that Ms. Melnick made, she left me with an impression that there are times in the past when these meetings are taking place, that she's been the proverbial fly on the wall. Now, I think you and I chatted about this, Ms. Woodhouse, in reference to the benefits that could be gained from someone like myself or anyone else here on the board as far as just listening and learning and getting a greater insight as to what teachers are experiencing and maybe some of their frustrations. To me, that's a wonderful place for me to just sit and listen and learn. But if I remember correctly, that may sound like a good idea, but it's probably not necessarily a good idea, an application. And is that a correct understanding?
I think that that's a correct summary of it. We purposely did not invite school board members. Ms. Anderson and at the time, Ms. Rai did come for an opening, but then they left. And we want to make sure that employees feel like it's an anonymous situation where it's not going to be reported back to anyone if they speak freely. Even human resources being in the room. Mrs. Woodhouse and I removed ourselves from it. We were not part of the facilitation process because we didn't want to feel, have anybody feel uncomfortable that HR was in the room or taking notes or reporting back to anybody about what they were saying. And that's why we make it very clear to participants at the very beginning of the meetings, that their names are not used. When I do the analysis of the comments and things like that, names are not attached to any of that. So it can't be brought back to somebody's supervisors. So I think that part of it is very important for employees to feel like they, they can voice their concerns without having anybody taking notes behind, behind the scenes.
I think, Mr. Callen, it might have been in the past when she was a teacher because they did these years ago. And I've attended many as a teacher. I know Mrs. Anderson has. And I think that's what she was meaning, not, not now as a school board member. Ms. Anderson?
So last year, you indicated that every other year, we do the survey.
Correct.
So this would be our year to do the survey as well. Is that correct?
Yes, it's going to be in February to March timeframe.
Okay, all right. So there's another avenue.
Correct.
If they miss these input meetings that are in person and also virtual, they can also participate in the survey. And also, we need to make sure that people understand that the surveys are also anonymous.
Yes, absolutely.
We constantly tell teachers, employees, that they're anonymous. And somehow, they still don't believe us. But I think they feel like we can trace them no matter what, you know, because they're using their school computer. Or, you know, on the surveys, they can even use their home computer if they wanted. They don't have to use their school computer.
Correct. And, and, you know, we have about 5,000 to 6,000 people respond to those surveys, which is a very, very high participation rate. So we don't have any interest to go in and try to determine who said what. So it is an anonymous survey. And we try to get that across to employees. Of course, as you know, sometimes people just don't feel comfortable in doing it.
I know. I get it. But, you know, we can just reiterate that over and over and continue telling them that we really want their input. This is, this is their opportunity to give full input.
Yes.
Attend the meetings and do the survey.
Correct. And it's been very helpful. We, I think, two years ago, we gave you a list of different things that came out of different surveys. And some of our benefits changes, the proactiveness of this board to change insurance premiums were a direct result of feedback that we received from our employees. So we do find it very valuable.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our next D2023 Model Policy Work Session. And Kami Lanetti, our school board attorney, will be leading this. And we all will be participating.
Good afternoon, school board members. Dr. Robinson, Robertson, I'm Kami Lanetti, school board attorney. What we're going to do... What we're going to do for you this afternoon is something that Dr. Roberts and I worked up after your last school board meeting. And Ms. Tonyata, are you able to pull up the graph, the colored graph? After your last school board meeting, you were in a situation where you did not have anything moving forward on the model policies. So we tried to, Dr. Roberts and I tried to figure out how we could help you get to the next stage to understand what you were working on. If you remember from reading the 2023 model policies as proposed by the Virginia Department of Education, the 2023 policies, you can either adopt the policies, the sample policy that the Virginia Department of Education is recommending, or you can bring your policies, regulations in to be compliant or more comprehensive. So your last time, it's a school board meeting, you were not able, you did not have enough votes to adopt a version of the sample model policy. So that doesn't mean you didn't, don't have anything out there. We explained to you as I've talked with the PRC, you do have a lot of your policies that are already in compliance. We felt we're close enough in compliance. We want to make that a little bit more obvious for you. So what you have in your agenda package is a chart, and there's a lot of information we gave you. So Dr. Roberts and I and senior staff worked on this chart. So what we did was on the left-hand side, we literally took the language out of the VDOE 2023 sample model policy. And on the middle side or the right-hand side, we tried to graph out where we thought the language was. And it's in your agenda, it's in the agenda materials itself, it's not a separate handout. So if you have your agenda materials, you'll see this. And this is what came out last week. So what we did here also is if we thought you, the language was close enough in the model policies, we put it in green. If we thought, we suggested some language that we thought you could adopt, and where that will be appearing yellow. On the far right-hand side, we tried to mark where we thought we were in compliance. So first section up is the purpose. We didn't see a reason to put a purpose, that doesn't fit into one of our policies and regulations. So we went into the definitions. We actually worked on this. So if you look in your consent agenda tonight on policy 531, which is student records, PRC had looked at this at the last PRC meeting. We brought this forward for the information agenda last time. It is in your agenda materials, in the original agenda materials that came out on Thursday. So if you're looking for, where does it? Yeah, you'll see what you got in the secondary materials that came out over the weekend with the actual policies and regulations supporting. If you wanted to see the full policy, the, this chart, the VHSL chart are all in your original agenda materials that came out. So first up on your definition was parent. We did not have a definition of parent. In there, we have a definition of eligible student, but not a definition of parent in 531. So on your consent agenda, which is in there for today, if you go forward and adopt just that, recommended by PRC, that definition you said their parent would be added to that. That was a recommendation coming out of PRC. It is our impression from dealing with you and senior staff working that we hear that you want to come as possible in compliance with the 2023 model policy. So after talking through how we were going to work the language on there, although PRC initially, or last time, recommended taking out two of the proposed definitions, after working through what we thought the language should be, we believe the definitions need to go back into the policy to help us interpret the policies and regulations on there. So we were actually suggesting that you amend policy 531, even though PRC recommended it. And you'll see the definition of sex on the left-hand side. We've, we'd adopted exactly in there. We changed the definition a little bit on transgender, which is in 531, and it reads up on the board, we had a definition, a slightly different addition to it involving gender, gender identity. And if there's a second sentence that we added to it, having to do writing, because we feel it's important to understand how you're going to change somebody's name or gender, it needs to be put into their official records. So you'll see a second line that we added that reads, "Any writing from the eligible student or parent of a minor student shall be memorialized in the student's official records and be subject to the same retention, disclosure, confidentiality agreements." So we're actually recommending, and you will see in the actual document that, the second set of documents that came out that have all the policies and regulations, it has a table of content in the front of it. We put 531 as it appears right now in your consent agenda. We also put our recommendation that you amend 531 to include these two definitions in that section that will follow in there. And again, you have a table of content on that section. The policies and regulations came in, so you should be able to pull that out and take a look at it. Again, on your, on your regulation, I think that shows up. Where have I seen that? Our, on page 14 of the full, the secondary sources that came out, you'll find 531 as in the PRC recommendation. On page 20, you'll see our recommendation, which has the full language that we've set it up there. So our recommendation, although that is not what we've discussed with PRC, because the way we work through the policies and regulations, we do think that needs to go back in right now. I know Mrs. Brown has talked to me about changing some language. You want to wait till we go through all of it, you want to talk about it right here?
I am happy to do either, and I can hand this out if people want now. Just, because I talked to Dr. Jamison and Kami, and I had emailed a couple of things and you emailed me back. And the reason for this change is because if you look at the model policies, there is a section that the definition on the board is not compliant with. And so that is the only change. I believe that.
It'll be the first line on there.
Yeah. So, so the, if you look at definitions for transgender student means a EBCPS student whose parent has stated in writing that the student's gender differs from the student's sex or an eligible student who states in writing that his or her gender differs from his or her sex. And then it's, I added this part, "Any writing from the eligible student or parent of a minor student shall be memorialized in the student's official record and be subject to the same retention, disclosure, and confidentiality requirements as the record, official record itself." And I can pull up that section, but it may take me a moment.
And that's language you'll see. We recommend that too. On, when I talked with Mr. Jameson, we were talking through how this works in a school setting. We wanted to make sure if I'm coming to the school, I'm the eligible student or I'm the parent and I want to change it, to understand they actually do need to get that document written to us and we will incorporate it into the record. So we felt it was important that it appear here with the definition. It doesn't in the model dot, the model policy language. I don't think it changes with the model policy language. I think it's, it's more comprehensive or explains it. But we wanted to make it clear that we actually need that in writing. You can't just walk in and say this day, you actually have to memorialize it and we will then include it in your record. So we thought that belonged here in the definition.
But it's the same thing that she just said.
Right. If you look on the left-hand side on the graph, that's, I believe that's the same language you're proposing, Mrs. Brown. It was slightly very close. And our first sentence is different, a little bit different. And I believe we've, she's spoken with the school administration. They don't necessarily have an objection to doing this. So I think what Mrs. Brown's changing would be the first sentence under the yellow section over here. The second sentence, she's incorporated the same as we did.
Could I make a request before we get too deep into this?
Yes, sir.
Could we stay sequential? So if we're referring to section A or B or C, that we make reference to that particular section and the cross-reference as a comparison. Otherwise, I feel there's a great opportunity to get lost in the shuffle as far as just following and staying on page, on the same point that you're making.
Okay, so what we did, so and I took it out when I broke it out, was by the sections exactly that appears in the 2023 model policy. So definition two, section two is definitions. A is parent. The, we have a slightly different, more expanded definition that the PRC brought forward. I don't think it substantially changes anything on there. That is what is in your consent agenda. We are continuing to recommend that definition. B is sex, means biological sex. I think we put it over here, sex of the purpose of identifying an individual means biological sex. And the reason we did that is sometimes you use the word sex for sex education and other things on there. We wanted to make sure this was relevant to an individual. It didn't apply other places in the curriculum that it might, that sex may come up in curriculum type of things. So that's why we expanded that definition. So C now is their definition of transgender student, which my, what I believe Mrs. Brown is doing is she wants to use exact definition of the model policy. So she would be replacing on the left, the right, the right-hand side, our first sentence with the sentence you see on the left and then keeping our second sentence, which is, "Any writing from the eligible student or parent or minor student shall be memorialized in the student's official record and be subject to the same retention, disclosure, and confidentiality requirements as official record itself." So that would stay the same. I'm sorry.
It would have been nice if we had had this earlier. Best, what you have up here as a handout that we could refer to. Because I just, I just now I'm able to pull it up, but I think I'm able to pull it up. I've been, I've been sitting here the whole time trying to get it up.
Well, what you have is what Mrs. Brown just gave you, which is a combination of the draft policy, the 2020, 23 model policy and the recommendations that we have. The recommendations that you see here in yellow are in the supplementary document you got over the weekend. That is in this, and that's on page 20, I believe, with the secondary documents. Okay. Sorry, Mrs. Franklin.
She took away, actually. So instead of the, this, right where it says, "Has stated in writing" that, if you're looking at the one on the screen, it says, "Has stated in writing that the student's gender or gender identity." And then here, we just says that states that the student gender, so they've removed the gender identity from the student's sex. So that, that, that verbiage is what, what seems to have been.
Correct.
Right, correct. Okay, so I guess I'm just curious, is there an objection to just having the words in there? Are you just trying to keep it more aligned to the?
Consistent with section, I believe it's four with the model policies. Section four, three. Would not, the model policies does not specify gender identity in there. So that's the reason.
Because it's.
And initially, I had, I had thought that, you know, that was a good compromise. But I did talk to a number of individuals that have been very closely involved with these, and it does not meet the intentions of the consistency of the model policies to add that. So that is the reason that I.
Was that like a legal review or was that a?
Various legislators.
Okay. So they feel like adding the words gender identity is not in the spirit.
Correct.
You're going to have to go through the, the chair, okay? You're having a conversation back and forth, so you need to.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so we, because it's, it's going to get crazy if we don't, okay? So, Ms. Franklin, you still need to ask about this.
Well, I, I, that's why I'm so sorry, because she just responded. She just responded. But, but that's, I was just curious what the objection was to removing the words gender identity. Because outside of that, that, it's pretty much the same, so.
Okay, Ms. Melnick.
Leaving it as it's, as it's stated here in yellow, the proposed, we are in compliance.
At this point, it's going to be, I think it would be comprehensive. You're going to have arguments at this stage as to definitely, there is no definition of gender or gender identity offered in the model policy. So we're all kind of struggling with what they intend for this. You'll see it in various case law. This is just an area we're going to have to deal with. You're going to have, there's no definition for you to work off at the moment.
Okay, but you have checked the yes that will keep us in compliance.
I think this will comply, you know, obviously if you take it out and just do gender, we'll just manage it. And that would also comply. We're just going to have to deal with it, like I said, because there's no agreed upon definition on gender and gender identity that we can officially work of. I can't tell you how this would be interpreted. I think either one of them would be compliant, we'll just deal with it.
Why did PRC decide to add that?
PRC did not. PRC did not recommend including sex or transgender because in our position, when we were discussing to PRC, and this was, we had two meetings. One was on the 10th and 14th. The second meeting, the school administration was not able to be with us for that. So my discussion with them is we generally don't use the term sex or transgender very often in our policies or regulations. So if we were keeping our policies or regulations or even normal practice, it's just not something that comes up altogether that often. But after what we heard, the school board talking about in your comments, we feel that you wanted to come in clients of the 2023 policies to implement some of the language from the 2023 policies where they do focus on sex and transgender. We needed those definitions to go back in so that our, so when the staff is dealing with, they understood what the, what the definition was.
So the model policies introduced the word sex and gender. But those are things that we, like, as you just said, that those weren't terms we typically use. But because they were using the model policies, now we're tweaking our own policy language to meet those policies?
Honestly, if you look at our policies, transgender is really only going to appear probably this time in 57.1.
Okay.
With the regulation, one of the main regulation we put in after the last round of model policies came through. It's not a term we use consistently. While you might hear it in meetings, it doesn't appear in our policies in there. So it wasn't really a need for a definition on there. If we're going to go forward and stay very close to the 2023 VDOE model policy, where it does depend on the language of sex and transgender, then we need those definitions back in there. So there isn't confusion when the school administration's attempting to implement these policies and regulations.
Okay.
And that took, it took us a while to get there while we were working through that and realized we were just going to have to put them back in there so that we weren't stuck out there trying to, having somebody at school level interpret what this means.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Morton.
So I like leaving gender identity in there because we are an international community. There are 17 countries that allow for gender X on a birth certificate at birth, which means that that student, when they enroll in our school, is self-identifying as one of those genders. It is not on their official documents. And so we need to figure out where do those folks who are gender X, intersex, fit here? And I think leaving in gender identity allows space for those students.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if the school administration wants to address how this is going to be an issue for us and when someone comes in to register on the paperwork on there. We've had some discussion. I think we can deal with it either way. Gender identity does open the door. I think it's just, I, I can't be a whole lot of help to you at this point because there are no specific definitions on this. Whichever to choose, we're going to have to just manage if there's a complaint.
So again, I'll reiterate, my preference would be to leave that in there so that we make sure we're covering all of our bases because people are not always male or female, even in their birth certificate documents.
Mr. Culpepper.
Hey Kami, on the part two D, it refers to attending post-secondary education. What constitutes attending?
Can you roll that down? I did, I can't roll it down. Yeah, sorry, it's at the bottom.
If I'm getting ahead, I'll wait.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. No, I'm just trying to get up to, we can see it.
I was just curious what constitutes attending post-secondary?
Oh, no, so back up, sorry, Ms. Tonyata, we're going to back up. It was just at the end of that last box. It's, that's actually the definition under FERPA, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. If you are taking college courses, and this has happened, and this, my son did this and went over to TCC for some courses, even though he was 16, walking over to TCC for the purpose of TCC, he was considered an adult taking that course. So he could make the decision about his records being over there. And that, that's just a federal definition. So if you're attending that.
Okay, so for the purposes of TCC, he's considered an adult. Does this language look like you're extending that to his elementary school record or his high school record as well?
Todd, can we flip up a little bit to, I don't, I think that's a standard. I just need to go up a little bit higher.
If what you can say about TCC history, then we don't need any language in, in our policies.
Well, five, 531 developed all of the students' records. So we do have students that are attending college courses, huh?
I understand that.
Okay.
I'm just trying to understand the division's records versus the college's records. It sounds, it sounds the way you've written this here, or the way it's written, I don't know who wrote it. It sounds the way this is written that it would extend, I wonder what you're going to call it, relative emancipation?
You want a, you want a clarification as to their records only relevant to their post-secondary institution work, so.
Well, you say that's a matter of law. That's what I was going to ask you, and you already said.
Right, that's the definition. I mean, we can clarify.
So if that's a matter of law, we don't need to address it. So, that's a matter of law, we don't need to address it at all?
Yeah.
Because that law doesn't apply to elementary school. So, just because somebody's attending TCC for one class, that law doesn't?
If you were an eight-year-old and you were going to ODU during the day, while you're at ODU, technically, you're an adult, you know, you can-
I'm in agreement with that part. But while you're here, you're not.
Correct. So, we can clarify the language if you would like to see it clarified, to say that only applies to their records relevant to their post-secondary work.
I think that's appropriate, yes.
Okay, I would just have to fix that language before we got it out there, but that's not a problem.
Ms. Manny?
Yeah, I think in order to be in compliance with the model policies, it should state what Ms. Brown has written here in policy five dash thirty-one that she's submitted to us. Thank you.
Ms. Morton?
So, thinking about what Mr. Culpepper said about two D, if we're going to massage that language, how would this work with a student who is doing an apprenticeship or internship at 16? The employer has to honor EEOC, preferred name, preferred gender. But that employer has to report back the student's progress, student's hours worked, grade, or they treat it as an adult at work. At 14, you need a work permit and parent permission, but at 16, you don't.
I don't think that meets the definition of post-secondary institution. I'd have to, it would depend on the institution itself.
Would we need to put something in here? So, let's say I'm an employer, right? I'm in our Partners in Education. I need to communicate with the school about this employee's progress. Under EEOC, I need to use their preferred name and gender. But it's an official school document, right? They're doing schoolwork, they're getting credit. How, where are we there?
I'm trying to think if I've looked at one of these agreements recently. A lot of the times, we have them subject to the FERPA rules for reporting back to us. So, it might be whatever, it would be in the MOU that we sign with that, that organization, what rules we're going to follow. So, we might say, in a condition of them taking our student, you're gonna follow what our rules are. It could be, I just, without looking at the MOU, I can't tell you what that employer is going to do. Because they're really not, I'm not sure they're always an employee. They may or may not be an employee. We'd have to work that out with the MOU.
Right, so, are students who do internships, apprenticeships, they only do those under MOUs? Or can a student do like a cooperative education where they find the job themselves? And then it counts for school credit? That's similar how it works in college, I'm not sure about.
I'm returning the school administration as to what they authorize for that.
Good afternoon. So, for any cooperative education program that a student would be a part of, there would be paperwork that is submitted through the school to the employer. So, there's automatically a conversation that is occurring. So, any information that we're disclosing, there is a conversation that has to happen with the parent and the student and the school to be consistent with how we're going to refer to the student. We would be sharing at that point in time what information we have on file and therefore what we're using. Not to jump ahead, but if we ran into a situation where a chosen name at work was different from the chosen name on file, or I should say, the name, the legal name that's on file in school, that's where a discussion would occur.
So, do we need to address that if we're gonna change this language here in D? Do we need to put something in there that'll, you know, when it comes to employment? Is some language in there, Ms. Melnick?
Like I said, we haven't looked at the post-secondary. We weren't looking at that section of it to talk about there. But if you were mending that definition on post-secondary, I said, that would take me a little work to, I'm not sure if something I can complete by tonight because I'm gonna have to look to see what circumstances are that would meet that requirement.
That's something that I think I'd like us to sort through at some point because we're working on these workforce initiatives, these internships, apprenticeship initiatives. I think it's important we get clarification there.
Ms. Melnick?
Okay, so, I'm just going back, Mr. Callen, to C. It's still up on the, on the board, that one. Okay, as it's written, again, I don't want to repeat myself, I just need to understand one comment. As it's written, are proposed in yellow, we're compliant. But the reason-
Are you asking me or who?
No, I'm asking Ms. Linetti. But the statement that was made was that the word "gender identity" was removed because after talking to legislators, it wasn't quite in the spirit of the model policies. And so, if we didn't get to ask any legislator's opinion about their opinion about the spirit of, based on the writing, based on what was given to us, and also a slight bit of autonomy, do, are we compliant?
Well, it makes that legislators didn't write the model policy.
No, well, then why are they talking about the spirit of?
I don't know, I didn't have that conversation. So, I don't know, I mean, twenty-two point one, twenty-three point three tells you what General Assembly told VDOE to do on there. I don't think they've given a definition on it. The interpretation you're reading or the 2023 model policies is coming out of the Virginia Department of Education. So, a legislator wouldn't be involved with that. So, that's just a legislator's interpretation of what they thought it was because this is an executive branch agency that's producing this. Again, I cannot give you a formal state definition on gender or gender identity on there. So, we're just gonna have to live with a choice. If we do gender and someone challenges us as to whether gender identity was in there, we would look to the model policy, which the Virginia Department of Education believes is compliant with the various laws out there, and we'll do what we can. I think that's an area that's open for interpretation. If you do, I understand that people disagree that there's difference between gender and gender identity on that. We would just have to do, I don't have a good answer for you with this one because I don't have a formal definition under the model policies as to what this actually means.
And so, without that definition, as written in the yellow proposed, it's compliant. You have the box checked. That's all, I just, I just didn't know where the feelings came in.
I think we can do it either way. I think, we were trying to be more comprehensive, having in mind that people are challenging, we're trying to help. If somebody walked in the door and said, "This is my gender or gender identity," we were trying to help the administration by saying, "Either one, write it down, and that's what we're going to follow."
Okay, so we're being more comprehensive. Okay, thank you.
We were trying to help, though.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Culpepper?
I was gonna reiterate quickly, you know, the, you know, the comments about work outside of school as part of your education just kind of highlights my point. I think you're just completely removed attending post-secondary because again, it's covered elsewhere, it's covered in law, as you pointed out. It obfuscates what we're trying to get at here as would workforce management stuff.
Okay, I believe that is currently in policy five thirty-one. That's in our policy, so we would have to strike that out. So, that's not something we're offering to add. That's currently in your policy. We'd have to do a strikeout on the policy to get that, but we can do that.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you. I would be in favor of leaving the term "gender identity" and being more comprehensive than the model policy. In addition, I would question, where else in our policy do we have the word "gender identity"? I know that we do have it other places in our policy. And if we're going to remove it from this piece, does it create?
I believe it is in, anywhere you're citing, and I'm gonna pull the, when you cite the Virginia Human Rights Act there, so most likely it's gonna be five seven, which in your supplementary materials, it starts on page eight. And let me take a look. So, on policy five seven, this is your non-discrimination, non-harassment, under the purpose, it is, and it's the second sentence, "It is the policy of the school board to prohibit any and all discrimination, harassment, and bullying based on an individual's race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions, age, marital status, general disability, genetic information, military veteran status." So, we've listed it there on that policy. And then anywhere we're citing to the non-discrimination clauses, which appear a lot in other areas in the disclaimers and a lot of our documents on there, you'll see that same wording there.
Thank you, and that was kind of my thought. If we have that included in our non-discrimination everywhere else in our policy, I'd like to have it included here as well. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
So, I just want to be clear. The VDOE had changed this model policy, which we're all clear on. But in terms of the Human Rights Act, that has not been changed. So, is gender identity included in the Human Rights Act currently?
I have a copy in front of me to pull up. I may have to pull it up. I think it is, but I don't want to say without pulling it up on my computer.
Can we verify that? Please? And I think for the public, can you help us understand how we are required to be in compliance with the Human Rights Act?
The proposed model policies actually say you're supposed to be in compliance with twenty-two point one thirty-nine. And that's actually in the language in the twenty-two twenty-three policies. And again, how they've interpreted that's another question. But it does actually say you're supposed to be in compliance with them in the policy. So, I'm just having to pull this up.
So, it doesn't say that we should not be in compliance? I'm just wanting to get clarification here.
Y'all are asking for clarification. As I've explained to you, this is not clear, the interpretation. And as going up with the Attorney General's Office, our interpretations of how to comply wouldn't necessarily say that there's a general consensus that this information is consistent. So, we're doing the best we can to get you in the right position. So, what I'm trying to do is pull up the code section.
And I'm sorry, I just had a question for Mr. Culpepper. Chair, do you mind if I?
You can ask through Ms. Linetti.
Okay. So, I just, I apologize because I can't hear you clearly. I'm not trying to pick on you, I'm just, sometimes I can't hear you clearly, so I didn't quite-
You can't hear Mr. Culpepper?
Okay, so, so I just wanted to ask, Ms. Linetti, can you ask Mr. Culpepper? Would, I'm just unclear about the eligible student in the post-secondary, what the objection is to that? I didn't quite hear what the objection was to the post-secondary. But I don't want to give up my-
That's fine. He can, he can answer.
Okay, thank you.
Well, first off, I pointed out that, or I asked the question, what does attending post-secondary mean? What constitutes attending post-secondary? And Ms. Linetti said, "It's attending any single class." So, if you're attending a single class in a post-secondary environment, you are, you are in post-secondary education. So, the way this is written, that would basically emancipate for the purposes of school division records anybody who's taking a single course in post-secondary. I don't think that's the intent of what she wrote here.
Oh, I see.
Nor do I think it's appropriate.
Okay, because you're saying that it's a comma, it's not an or. Or, I, okay, so you're saying that it means a student who has eighteen years of age of older, a student attending post-secondary emancipated or emancipated, okay.
Right, and Ms. Linetti pointed out, pointed out as a matter of law that any student, no matter their age, who's attending a post-secondary education has control over their records in the post-secondary environment. So, we don't need to say that they do. It's a matter of law that they do. And it has nothing to do with, with our environment. And so, it doesn't need to be in this at all.
It actually can because we do have some of those courses taught within our school division in there. So, there are times and it can be records on there, so.
So, do they constitute attending post-secondary education, or do they not? If they're attending-
Why, if you, if you offered a TC class, if you had a TC class at Cox High School, which can happen, then that class would be the TCC class happening at Cox High School. And sometimes we do have our teachers teaching that in the classroom.
Back to my question. If you're in that environment, are you attending post-secondary education or not?
For that class, yes.
Okay, so then you don't need it in here?
Okay, we can pull it out. I am, yeah. I do think we're probably gonna look, I think we do need to have some of the information there because, and I have to talk to Mr. Jameson, there are times when some of that information needs to be clarified where, because we would have reason to know about your secondary class. You're, we're transporting you to something, you're on our campus doing something. So, some of your information may come back over into our transcripts and things like that. So, we, I'd be more comfortable with changing it for records relevant to the secondary, post-secondary institution because it's not like they're totally a TCC student when they're there. If you're at Cox High School and you're taking a secondary class and you are not acting appropriately, we may be disciplining you while you're in that classroom on there, you're in our environment if you got hurt. So, I'd be more comfortable in clarifying that you're eligible student for the purposes of the records on there. We can come back with, you know, we can pull it, like I said, that currently exists in your policy right now. So, we're not offering to change that. We can change it, so we can certainly come back and look at it. I'm not asking to put that in there, that's already in their policy. So, we can come back and look at that, and I can certainly, we actually have PRC on Thursday, so we could take it back there and fix that or pull the whole thing, the clarification. I, I think there's a better way to explain it because I don't think you're totally segregated. Even though you're in our school, at this point, you are in Cox High School, eating lunch at Cox High School, following your disciplinary rules, using Cox High School facilities, just for that class, the way you're being taught, you are a TCC student during the day. So, I don't want to, I don't want to-
I would argue that sorts itself out. You know, the records that are unique to TCC are unique to the classroom environment. And all those other things you're referring to that are at Cox High School obviously aren't in the TCC, are unique to the TCC record. I think it sorts itself out, but I get your point that that can be clarified, and I appreciate that.
Going back, Mrs. Franklin, under the definition for, under the Virginia Human Rights Act two point two thirty-nine hundred, it, it states that, it actually, the definition safeguard all individuals within the Commonwealth from unlawful discrimination based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions, age, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, military status, or disability in place of the public accommodation, including educational institutions and in real estate transactions. And they do have a definition in a different section of the Virginia Human Rights Act. So, they don't use the term "gender" in the Virginia Human Rights Act, they use the term "gender identity."
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Linetti, with the question that Mr. Culpepper has about taking that out, how does that change things? What is the importance of taking that out? If you want to be inclusive and make sure we're covered?
Are we back to section the C, section the transgender, we're not on eligible student anymore?
I'm back in section D with where he was talking about, though.
You're talking about eligible student definition, or you're talking about transgender student definition?
Eligible student.
Okay. And I gotta, I'd have to get through the policy a little bit more. It's a seven-page policy on eligible student. I need to verify if it shows up other places. I think it's more of a clarification when you are a student in post-secondary records because it shows up for when your parent would have rights to look at those records and make decisions about signing up for some of the classes. That's, and so, I don't want to totally pull it out without clarifying where it is.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Anderson?
So, the clarification of an eligible student, and I'm back on definitions. So, how, don't we have students who are younger than eighteen who are sometimes emancipated?
Yes, and that's, that's true, they can be.
Okay, so, so why would we take out? I don't understand the whole purpose of anyone asking to have the emancipated student taken out. Is that what I'm hearing or not?
I think his question is more defining, his concern is the way you read it. A student attending a post-secondary institution, the fact that you took one course at TCC, does that mean all your records then at Virginia Beach City Public Schools are your, you make the decision for it? It really should be, you can clarify it down to it's relevant to your post-secondary work. That's where you're an eligible student. If you're an eight-year-old and you're taking, you know, regular math and English and PE- If you're an eight-year-old and you're taking, you know, regular math and English and PE for those courses and they're not TCC courses, then that's where your parent gets to see the record, you're not an eligible student for that, it's only relevant to your post-secondary. So I think Mr. Culpepper is trying to clarify the fact that just because you take one course doesn't mean you're an eligible student for everything else.
Right. But if a student in today's time is 16 or 17 and they commit a crime, in most cases, they're treated as adults.
Depends on the crime, the nature of the crime, but that, but that's, that's a specific law, I think y'all, don't go down paths trying to find, we've talked about when for having children or birth, those are very specific laws that are written in here, you don't get to make that decision. Emancipation is defined by the Code of Virginia, don't, don't go down that realm, it's, we would look to the statutory definition when you're emancipated on here. We can clarify the post-secondary institution when you're, when those records are relevant to that for post-secondary purposes on there. We did add the second line in there, students who are 18 years old and subject to court order that places a student under legal guardianship with another person will be treated as minor students, because that does show up for us with a lot of our students, a lot of our special ed population, so we wanted to be able to keep using the term in there, so we threw that in there, that's a normal term, but I wouldn't go down the realm of emancipated, that's a very specific definition, it requires a court order, you have to meet certain conditions, or under certain health provisions under thirty-two, the Title 32.1, you have to fit within those definitions to do that. So the fact that you might be treated as an adult because you were arrested for something, that's a whole separate law, and that wouldn't make you emancipated for other purposes.
So I still feel though that, okay, students at Cox High School, they're taking a course from TCC while they're under our roof, okay? During that particular class, the teacher can call them whatever the student asks them to call them, would that be correct? For that class?
I'll be honest with you, I think we signed the agreements with TCC if you're in our school, and I don't remember, I haven't looked at it in a while, that they're going to follow our rules while they're in our building.
Okay.
Now, if they went to the TCC or ODU campus, you know, we're not, they're there on their own, they're taking those courses, and they might be following whatever the TCC or ODU rules are.
All right.
Ms. Anderson? I just wanted to make sure I kind of got clarification, and I guess this is new territory for this part eligible student that has already been in our policy, but students who are over 18 but are in guardianship for whatever reason likely, special education, those students are not going to be able to choose what they are called because they are disabled, that's what we're writing?
It's going to depend on the nature of the guardianship. So it depends on the rights granted to you, but if it's legal guardianship, if you've lost your rights and they've been given to the guardian, that's the term of your guardianship, we don't make that determination, it's whatever the guardianship has granted the right to the guardian.
So it'll be dependent upon what, however that order is written?
And the guardianships can have a lot of variety to them, so it's really a matter of what's in that guardianship term.
Ken, and it sounds like this eligible student statement is going to be taken back for perhaps PRC for this week, but I'm wondering if there is a way that that statement about students who are 18 and older and subject to a court order, if we will just say that it, the division will abide by the terms of that order, instead of blanketing it across to all students who are over the age of 18 who may have some kind of a disability that gives them guardianship situation?
We can take that to PRC on Thursday and take a look at it.
Okay. Okay, so.
All right, so moving on, we're going to, section three of the model policies, which applicable law, you'll see, it shows up in a couple places for us. And two, thirty-three is our required statement for Title IX, we have it in there. Seven A is the nondiscrimination policy for students, there's, you'll see some of the language, so we thought the language is matching up in those. You'll see under seven A, the third, seven A, and again, remember green means I think we're compliant. Other policies that also have some of these prohibitions are five forty-four, your sexual harassment policies, and five forty-four point one, which is the supporting regulation policy. Four four is your nondiscrimination policy for employees, and four forty-one is a regulation supporting that six seven, six eight has some access and some other issues on it that also deal with it. So we felt that the language that was required over here is already met in these particular policies going down, so we're under A two. There, we didn't, we couldn't find a policy that really said we do training, different health and mental awareness, but we didn't actually have a policy that talked about that on there because we already do those trainings. I think we're in compliance by the policies, but we don't have one specific policy. If you actually read that statement, school personnel will be trained annually on health and mental wellness support to and safety of students. I know you've certainly been briefed on that, we have many, many programs and trainings for this, so I don't know that one policy would cover that on there. So I think we're in compliance by the training we do, it just doesn't make sense to have one policy. That statement is too broad for the way we do our training, I think, but I do think you're in compliance for the training you provide. Section three, reasonable available students, guidance counselor, we have a policy six forty-one, a regulating six test forty-one E. We're suggesting clarifying the language on that, which would say, except with regard to eligible students, parents must be informed and given opportunity to object before counseling services pertaining to gender are given. So we're suggesting adding that language to that regulation, you'll see that, you've drafted that in your supporting documentation. Four was at the request of the parents, that the school division should designate administrator counselor to speak together with the student's parents, except in the case of eligible students, with any student regarding questioning pertaining to gender, the provision should not apply to regard to eligible students. In Regulation five, seven point one four, we were suggesting the language should read, at the request of the parents of a minor student, the school should designate an administrator counselor to speak together with the student's parents with the student regarding questions pertaining to gender. Second sentence would be eligible students may consult with an administrator or counselor regarding gender at their discretion. We think it reads the same, it was just made more, we thought it was easier to read this way as opposed to the language that's in there. Okay, can we go down a little bit, Ms. Tanyan? I'm sorry, go back up.
Mr. Culpepper?
And you were on A four?
Yeah, my question's actually on A three.
A three, okay.
I mean, just curious, so on the left side in the policy, it references Virginia Code, which is broader, it's talking about any counseling services, not just gender-related counseling services. I'm just curious, is that anywhere else in our policy? You know, the paragraph you put on there reiterates the gender counseling. It's a matter of law, so it doesn't necessarily matter, but I'm just curious if it's covered.
Well, I think the whole policy deals with counseling services on there, but it didn't specifically in that policy talk about gender, so we added that line in there, so you would see that on six forty-four point one, under page forty-seven is our guidance and counseling policy. And we, I don't believe it, we thought it, we didn't think it was specific enough as to gender on that, so we were suggesting adding that language in there.
Okay, but do you think it's, it's specific enough with regard to counseling services in general?
We thought it was.
The obligation to inform parents, okay.
And if I'm correct, you also sign off on this one, so we were talking about that. Yeah, if you, you know, when your kid brings some other papers, you have to sign off on the beginning of the year, one of those forms is your counseling form, so there's a specific opt-out form, this is our general policy on it, but the policy didn't specifically talk about gender, so we were just adding that, sorry, this regulation is adding that line on gender to make it clear that that was going to be compliant with this policy.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
So if a student wants to be called whatever name, and, and the parents want to be informed on this, because I've gone over this over and over and over, first of all, I don't think the teacher should be the one to have to call the parent, because there could be five teachers calling the parent. I think this is when the teacher needs to go to the counselor, and then the counselor needs to call, in my opinion, should call the student down and explain what's about to happen.
Okay, so, and I'm not going to disagree with you, but that, that shows up later in here, so what, it might make sense to just get to it where it appears in here instead of,
Right.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but it makes more sense logically to just follow what the model policy is?
My point is though, it says, except with regard to eligible students, parents must be informed and given an opportunity to object before counseling services pertaining to gender are given. When the student goes, I mean, that's where this is. If a student goes to a counselor and the counselor says, I'm going to be calling your parent because you want to be called John and your real name is Jane, for example, is that construed? Is that going to tie the counselor's hands, they can't even tell them that they're going to call their parent? Could, would that be construed as counseling the student in some way? Could you explain that? Because I don't want the counselors to feel like they can't even tell the student, I'm about to call your parents and inform them, because according to these policies, that's what is supposed to happen.
I think we need, there's some definitions that need to be further clarified, that's not what counseling services would include, that's just a conversation. Where this conversation is occurring is still up for discussion, that is, no decision has been made that this will automatically occur in a counseling office. There could be a variety of staff who are identified to work with students in these situations, and as a result, therefore, it's not automatically counseling services that would be provided, so I just want to clarify that point.
Okay.
The second aspect to the point that I think you are making and clarifying is what would include informed consent to the student, as in, does the student understand that by saying certain things that will then prompt a school staff person to call home? That's a separate conversation that is separate from counseling services that would need to be discussed. So I'm just offering clarification that in this instance, this is a situation where a student is working with a counselor on, we'll say, a variety of needs. Should gender come up under the purview of working with a school counselor, that's where we would pause and give the parent the opportunity to be informed about next steps. Separate from that, when we're getting into chosen name, chosen pronoun, a preferred name, a preferred pronoun, that's a separate process that would not fall under the purview of counseling services.
Right, but I wouldn't want a counselor or anyone to call home about what the student has said without the student first having knowledge that this is going to happen.
And that's, that's part of what needs to be discussed and determined, correct?
Right, I would like it addressed somewhere, whether through regulation or through our policy, that we take care of this. I don't want there to be any question about it, I feel like, you know, that's the one thing that a student should have the right to have, is the knowledge that my parent's going to be called.
And I believe this, where the board is making those, having those discussions right now?
Okay.
Franklin?
Mr. Jameson, but that's why I asked you to come up at the last meeting to let everybody know that currently, we are already doing that, right? We are already, if they want counseling, and we're talking about gender identity, pronouns, anything, we are currently asking the student if their parent already knows, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And making sure that we, they are aware that you, we are going to have to contact the parent.
And we were, the question that was asked at the last board meeting was specifically about name and pronouns.
Yeah.
So that is different from counseling services, because we do not provide counseling services for gender.
Right, right, exactly.
Really clear about, so the question that was posed at the last board meeting.
Right, right, okay, so that's a good clarification, that's absolute, okay, so that's a great clarification. So basically, thank you for making sure that's separated. So essentially, how would the question of the counseling services situation play in? Because, you know, listening, when the students were talking, that was one of the concerns, but we already do not provide any counseling services, is that correct?
That is correct, we do not provide counseling services.
We do not, okay, okay.
Regarding this specific.
So that would not change with the?
Correct, so this, to be very clear, this proposed amendment aligns with what we are doing because we do not provide those services. Should that topic come up, we would be including families and guardians at that point in time.
Okay.
And I want to be clear again, this is about counseling. Name and pronoun to Ms. Anderson's point from a second ago still needs to be addressed by the board.
But we are already.
We have a process in place.
Correct, we are already doing something, yes, yeah, thank you.
So the process is still in place for us to respond in those situations so that students are informed of how the name would appear from a nickname standpoint and the pronouns that would be used in the classroom. With this proposed language, there does need to be a discussion as to what constitutes the prompt for school staff to call home. That was what Ms. Anderson was asking, that's a new conversation given the new proposed amendments.
Okay.
Remember, what we're doing is we're matching up against what the 2023 model policy is suggesting, where in our policies we're working with it. So you got, I know you want to jump ahead to those issues, you're on that, we're trying to show you where you can find and what you would need to do to this. This is counseling services, you need a policy about counseling services, you have a policy about counseling services, that policy did not talk about gender, so we're suggesting add this line to this regulation, so make it clear that is exactly the line out of the model policy, we're tacking it on to where we think it fits in your regulation about counseling services, and that's all you're doing right now. Okay, so let's go down a little bit more, Ms. Tanyan. So four is the request to designate administrator, we took that language, it's almost identical, and put it over in five seven point one, under four on the regulation, so we're, changed slightly but not significantly on there, so we would put that, we would suggest you put that in that regulation. So that's not currently in, you will see a draft in, again, your supporting policies, if you look on page thirteen, the proposed draft we have would have, has that in that regulation. Okay, so going to B is prevention of, in response to bullying and harassment, so we threw in a lot of areas, we have it in the education program. It was easy for me just to link a bunch of the different areas that we have on bullying, you've done a lot of work on bullying in the last couple of years, so you know that information's in there. Two is an instant complaint response in five seven B, five seven is your nondiscrimination policy that has a lot of that information. We think that language, which already exists in there, meets that requirement, it all already talks about bullying in there. Three, bullying of any student for any reason cannot be tolerated. Five thirty-six point three D, bullying will not be tolerated, that's the current language you have, and they refer to a principle, that's your, that's actually, five thirty-six point three is your non-bullying, it's also your student discipline area, so you see that when you do student discipline areas, that's the code section, the regulation that they're citing to. Four, we think that we'll be available to hear concerns, the Department of Schools is available to hear concerns of students and parents when complaints are there. We just, and the reason, you may not be familiar, the statutes on, the General Assembly amended the statutes having to do with bullying, so we had to update this regulation recently, it just happens to match with what the model policy is putting in there. That was a recent addition that we put in, that became effective on July first, so that regulation currently reads this way. We had most of the bullying stuff in there, but there's a little bit of clarification that had to come out, so that currently exists. Five thirty-six point eight, I don't know what that was, okay, so that's, I'm not sure if we have a copy of that, but that regulation should just currently existed. On five is the school district shall inform parents of any bullying incidents within about 24 hours, that was really what the General Assembly was concentrating on, and their amendment to the statutes on there, and we already have that language in there, we think that meets that language. So we think our five thirty-six point three already meets the required language, you already had a nondiscrimination bullying policies in place, we've all had to have that in for many years, so we think that's currently consistent. If you go down to C on maintenance of records, it's also taught, this is five thirty-one again, about the confidentiality of records, and there we feel that the first section applies, a lot of this confidentiality student records is standard federal requirements and state requirements for confidentiality student records. We are suggesting, now, this is where you're getting into some of the name stuff. So two is the school division shall change the legal name or sex in a student or former student's official record only if a parent or eligible student submits a legal document such as a birth certificate, state identified, federal issued identification. We're proposing adding this language as a clarification on there, we've had that, we've never allowed you to legally change your name without the appropriate documentation, so that's always been there, but we just took the same language and put it over here in five seven point one, official language. Again, that has been our policy, your legal names on a document that requires your legal names had to have a formal document, so that doesn't change anything, but we're proposing putting this in the regulation to clarify that. Move down to D, identification students, so Mrs. Anderson, this is probably where you're getting into some of your stuff that we're talking about. So identification student, every effort should be made to ensure that the transgender student wishing to change his or her means of address is treated with respect, compassion, dignity in the classroom. So identification student, every effort should be made to ensure that the transgender student wishing to change his or her means of address is treated with respect, compassion, dignity in the classroom. So we think five seven is, again, your nondiscrimination policy. We think that already talks about that. Five seven point one also talks about some of your commitment to protecting them. So the change would start here in two. So what the proposed policy said is, the school division personnel shall refer to each student using only one, the name that appears in the student's official record. Or two, the student prefers using any nicknames commonly associated with the name that appears in the student's official record. Now, these policies should prevent the school division personnel from using a different name for a student when it is necessary for students' academic instruction, such as using a name or common in a foreign language, while in a foreign language class. This seems to be holding up everybody in the Commonwealth because that commonly associated is the problem. When we really talked about it, the way you change your name in the official record is either you're the legal person for yourself because you're an eligible student. Or your parent, legal guardian comes in. So whatever you put in that record, so we're focusing on what goes in the official record. So we are proposing changing five seven point one, again, the regulation. B one to read, school personnel shall refer to each student using only the A, name that appears in the student's official record. Or B, a nickname that the eligible student or the parent of a minor student has designated in the student's official record. So if you're Mrs. Williams situation where her son has an unusual name that's common for him, I don't really care if it's a derivative of it. If you've decided that Robert's name, you know, but Beamer you're going to use, sorry, Mrs. Williams, I'm going to tell you something. Is that where you put in, that's what your family calls the student, you put that in the record, as long as it's not completely an inappropriate name. We're going to go ahead with that. We don't, we're not going to get into whether that's a commonality or a relative because that's too hard for us. And I think that's hanging up a lot of people. It's just an ill-chosen phrase that the video we put in there, it could have been clearer. So this way, whoever's got the legal right to change a record puts that in the record and that's the name we're going to use. And again, we added, say, names, titles, nicknames associated with academic instruction. So you're in Spanish and they're calling you Juan on there, or extracurricular activities like hey captains refers you, you know, or a quarterback, something like that. Something that would be typical that would use in there, that would be allowable further without being noted in the student records. Because we thought that would be just relevant to what the academic instruction was. So three is school personnel shall refer to each student using only the pronouns appropriate to the sex appearing in the student's official record. That is male pronouns for a student whose sex is male, female for a student whose sex is female. We're proposing five seven point one B two is school personnel shall refer to students using only A, the pronouns associated with the student's sex or gender identity as set forth in the student's official record. Again, going back to whoever has the legal rights to make the decision, you put that in the record and that's what we're going to follow. Could we slide it to four, notwithstanding the provision of paragraphs two and three. And this, this was a very, this is not, this is confusing when written, so interpreting this is hard. Notwithstanding the provision of paragraphs two or three, this section, school division personnel shall refer to a student by a name other than one in the student's official record. Or by pronouns other than those appropriate to the sex appearing in the student's official record. Only if an eligible student or student's parent has instructed school division staff in writing that such other name of pronouns or sex or name or pronouns be used. We were kind of focusing on the fact that if you put it in writing, that was the section. So that's where we were kind of focusing on the language change. School personnel shall refer to students using only A, the pronoun associated with sex or gender identity as set forth in the official record. So the legal person, the legal rights puts it in there. Or B, the pronoun the eligible student or parent of a minor student has designated in the student's official record. So the people that have the right to make a legal decision, put it in the record. That's what we're going to follow. The pronouns recognized by the school division, we decided we're going to be he, she, and they. And an eligible student, a parent or minor student requesting a different pronoun other than those listed in the section should notify the principal or designate. That was our language that was there before. If you want to be Z or something else, you would need to come in and talk to us about that. We, when we were looking at this a couple of years ago, there were dozens and dozens of pronouns going to be used. We just thought we would pick they, and if you want something else, you can come talk to us and we'll figure out what we're going to do. We just thought that was easier. So we thought that language would clarify. We're focusing on the fact that the person with the right to make legal decisions for the student puts it in the record and that's what we're, that's what we're going to follow. And then, and five, any written instruction.
Hold on, Mr. Callen, sorry.
Just to clarify, in reference to the pronoun usage, I think we're going to get to it in a little bit. But I just wanted to make sure that if there is a reference to a pronoun that another student says, that doesn't fit. Using they as an example for an individual. Is this mandating that another student must use a pronoun that's requested or required? Even though from that student's personal point of view, it's an illogical pronoun?
All right, now that, now, look, this, this language right here is talking about school personnel.
Okay.
All right, so if you're going to come in, where it's probably going to show up, and you will see some of the language on here. I have a religious, you're going to say, I have a religious belief that I don't recognize anything else here or there. You don't automatically get to say, my religious, I've determined that I have religious right and I'm going to determine the accommodation that I want for that. That doesn't apply similar to any other accommodation requesting. If that is an issue for you, you're going to have to come in and have a conversation with your administrators and we're going to talk through it. You don't automatically get to violate somebody else's rights. We're going to have to work through how you're going to deal with the student, the other student. So that's, it's not an automatic right that you could choose to discriminate against somebody else. We're going to probably have to talk through how to handle that. So it's not as easy as, I know what you're hearing out there, they're saying that it's a guaranteed right, that your religious right, your religious right may not override somebody else's belief on there. So that's a conversation we have to have. It is a conversation we always have to have, particularly for religious rights in there. You don't automatically get to choose how you're going to implement your right in the study. We might have to go through that conversation with you, how we're going to accommodate you.
Does the reference to a religious right carry any difference from just an individual saying grammatically, that's not correct?
That's not a protected right.
That's not having anything to do with a religious perspective. It's just a grammatical perspective saying, how can I call you, using this as an example? How can I call you they when you're either a he or a she from that individual's point of view?
And honestly, this is.
Right being honored during this process.
What is a constitutional right that's protected? I need to know what your protected right is to say that. So that's, that's how it's going to cut the context, it's going to come up with. I can't answer all the questions. I need to see how the person brings it up. If you were to say to me, it was a religious, I have a protected religious right, then we would talk through the same procedure we use with all religious accommodations. How are we going to handle this? If you have, just a personal belief isn't always a protected right. And if this individual says, I'm, my gender identity is protected in the Virginia Human Rights Act, Title Nine and other issues on there. They would probably have a protective right, whereas if you just had a general belief, we're going to have to talk through, do you have a constitutional or any type of protective right that exceeds this other person's? Now, we would, this is something schools do all the time. We may say to them, okay, you don't agree with the pronoun, but do you need to use a pronoun when talking to this person? Can you just phone by their name? There are ways that we get around this, you know, you don't have to call him Mr. or Ms. You're my friend and call him by their name. Is there a way you can address it? We would have those conversations we could already get in. But you can't automatically determine that your rights override somebody else's right. It's fact-specific and we're going to have to work through this like we do all constitutional rights. But that's not, this section is just personnel, because we can tell our personnel, these are what we're going to do there. So right now, this section going down. Okay.
We have one more person to ask a question and then we're going to stop, okay? So, and we will come back to this workshop after the formal meeting. Okay, so Ms. May.
So in D three, the model policies, what they instruct us to adopt is personnel shall refer to each student using only the pronouns appropriate to the sex appearing in the student's official record. That is male pronouns for students whose sex is male and female pronouns for students whose sex is female. That's very different than what is being recommended here. I understand you may not agree with what they wrote in the Attorney General's opinion, but this is what they're telling us to do. And if we do what you're suggesting, we are not going to be in compliance. Because this says that they shall only refer to the student using the pronoun associated with their sex or gender identity. And then the second part of that is, it says in the student's official record. Well, what does that mean? So if a parent sends in a letter that says, I'm okay with you calling Johnny Jane and using, saying she instead of he. Or is the student's official record the legal documentation that's required to legally change a student's name and gender identity? With the birth certificate change, driver's license, all of that. What's the difference in the student official record?
So in terms of what the school personnel would do is actually on number four, the last sentence. So yes, there are legal documents that will dictate what's in the student's official record. To the last question that you had though, Ms. Manning, in terms of receiving something in writing, using the sample policy within the model policies. If a school is to receive something in writing, requesting that we use a certain name and pronoun, we would honor such.
Yeah, it says, it says we could honor that, but then this specifically says in this different part that, basically. Employees have a First Amendment right to not have compelled speech. And, you know, perhaps this is going to be settled in the, in the Supreme Court one day. But right now, we have the Department of Education telling us, this is what we need to adopt. And we're saying, no, we don't agree with that. We're going to adopt this. So I think we're out of compliance there. That's my input.